Okay.
Yes.
Chairman.
Sir, do we have to call this meeting to order?
No, I think it's not.
Okay, so we don't have to say anything?
You don't have to do anything for sure.
I think you can just say the words, we can ask the words.
Alright, so, alright.
With this hand.
So... Shall we start with the very well-printed and organized junkyard by Mr. Thor?
I'm just trying to show you what this is.
What's that?
You supply this, I supply this.
Well, I know, I mean, you know, I, so... Well, first of all, they don't have any comments on Tom's hard work here.
Yeah, only one that...
Or Tom yourself, do you want to make some comments and start?
We had some email exchange with Michelle. And I'm not sure where, she said, she said that the junkyards is prohibited for junkyards to expand, which I don't know where that says, but we have, this provision is copied from a different municipality. So, on A8.26A3, the area occupied by junk at any time shall not exceed by more than 10% the area occupied by junk in a day. We could just put it that, right?
Yes, please.
Yeah, we'll just say that the area shall not be expanded or increased.
I, I think that the inclusion of that is almost, it almost condones growth when, you know...
But it's the nature of the business, if it's a junkyard, you know, you have vehicles coming in, going out, you have a high one, you have a low one.
Sure.
And when you say expand, not as purchasing a body of neighbors and building additional buildings, I see that one, one definition of expansion. Or should you say expansion of the inventory that is on site?
I think it's more of a...
Because the nature of the business.
Yeah, I think I see.
We're just talking building, right?
Oh, the area footprint. Like if he's covering whatever, 40,000 square feet with junk, he can't go to 42,000 square feet.
I see what you're saying. But you look, we have that blurb, the blurb that's in there is the attempts on expansion, I think that...
I think what blurb does is basically cover the...
So you're talking about the outdoor storage space of the, the area, the density of the lot itself being...
Just being covered, right?
Increased.
Right, I think this covers what you're getting at, is that there's an allowable flexibility that says you can, if you have 40,000 square feet, you're gonna add another 400. But then, I agree with Caroline, you know, I just kinda copy this, but if someone starts creeping up, you know, it'll just get larger and larger.
And you're just subject to renewal every year.
Yeah.
So every year, in the sense that
Yep.
you'd be able to tell if it was real.
Yeah. Okay.
So is the proposal we strike the 10% section in Roman 8.26A3?
Yes, and I'll, I'll put in some languages that cannot expand.
Okay.
So, at the bottom of that page, B, it says that junkyards not legally operating already have to first receive the recommendation of the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission. So, I would, I would first add, they need a special exception by, or a variance from, sorry.
Yes.
Because it's not allowed in any district.
Right.
So they need to go to the ZVA, so we should add that first. But under what circumstances would a Conservation Commission ever condone the creation of a new junkyard?
I don't know. But I think what we need to think, are there others?
No, not legally operated.
Okay, so are there illegal ones? You were talking about the guy in Rollins Row.
Define mine, you know, I guess you'd have to define that.
There's all this stuff, well, we have it out there on the top. It doesn't quantify it, so I mean, if you have three or four cars that are in tough shape like he did, or five or six hours...
Possibly.
How many have?
I think you could argue we have others. Not licensed sanctioned ones.
Yeah. So that, that would, B would be that, right?
Well...
Not legally operated.
Well, yes, but you still have to add ZVA, because they're never gonna be legally operating. They're never gonna be licensed by the Select Board unless they first go to the ZVA.
But it also says may be licensed.
Well, still, they, they may not be licensed by the Select Board.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, I'm...
But I, I still question the point of the Conservation Commission, because, you know, junkyards are such a potential environmental hazard, even if run to, you know, state standards, in as much as they have to. I just think that's a really fascinating idea to put that in there, because it just sort of puts the whole thing down right there.
I think it's just, it's just another bar, right, that they have to...
I just think it's not an achievable bar.
But on what, on what grounds would the Conservation Commission approve or deny an application? I mean, they don't have the expertise scientifically to say, like, it will affect groundwater. I mean, you'd need to have a scientist to do that, not a group of citizen volunteers.
I think it's just to open up, to review, plan, anything that is positive.
How would it hurt? How would it hurt? How would the inclusion hurt?
I just think that there's no way that a Conservation Commission would ever sign off on it. So if the provision is in there because it allows the potential for another junkyard to be licensed in the town, really it doesn't. It's a backhanded way to actually never allow it, because, you know, although the composition of a Conservation Commission can vary, generally the kinds of people who would serve on a Conservation Commission are never going to feel as though that kind of operation is aligned with the missions of that group.
So what if, I'm just gonna go out here, so let's say that someone wants to put in a junkyard near a historic site in Rollins Row, wouldn't it be appropriate for the Conservation Commission to try, try and in? Is that what it's intended for?
I just think that you never, ever realistically gonna have a Conservation Commission buy in for a junkyard, because it's a hazardous environment. And I think that it's an impossible hurdle, but regardless, you still have, you need ZVA approval, Selectman, planning board, I mean, I think there's enough sets of eyes looking at it to, you know, I think the conflict, you can leave it in there, you'll...
Well, I think that's, I think that's a good point. If we just get rid of B, and if we run into an example of another Rollins Row or something, it's existing, it's a layman's violation. And if the guy wants to make it legal, I mean, we don't have to say in this, you have to run through the whole thing. We say if you get a variance to do it, then you have to run through this, the condition of approval by the zoning board.
Well, that's all the process anyway, so you're right, that if you take it out, it just becomes what is already the known process, which is essentially the same thing.
Yeah.
What about the Conservation Commission?
I have to ask about the definition of junkyard and that material, these materials are bought, sold. And when I go to the transfer station, I mean, they don't have, you know, stuff bought and sold.
Yeah.
But it looks like a junkyard to me.
It is.
So, I'm...
But municipal municipalities are exempt from their own ordinances. I mean, we try to do, you know, we don't want to do, do as I say, don't do as I do, but, I mean, if we have a transfer station...
Why do we have to, why do we allow junkyards? I mean, that's my pure...
Well, we really don't allow junkyards.
We don't, oh, yeah.
You know, they're, they're not allowed in the zoning ordinance, so they only exist currently as a non-conforming use. So, there is quite a hurdle for another one to ever become allowed, in that they have to get a variance from the ZVA. So, there's already that hurdle.
I mean, they could call themselves a secondhand shop and clean up. I sound very oblivious.
No, this is, this is good, that's what I'm saying, it is good.
It is good, but it's, you know, if they're getting close to, I think that's why it says all this about bought and sold and stored and held and whatnot. You know, if, if it looks like you're operating like a junkyard, and you're not, then, then that, that offers us the opportunity to enforce it as a non-licensed junkyard.
Oh, okay.
So the definition is important, so that, you know, I guess it would align with housing standards, that if you just seem to be having a lot of stuff, and you have hazardous conditions, because you have an enormous amount of things that fall into that definition, then we can bring that to your attention and say, go to the ZVA and go through the process of licensure, or cease and desist.
Okay, I just was like, I look at the transfer station.
A guy that just has two or three junk cars outside of him, his car, and if he wants to say, "Well, I'm not a junkyard, I'm not trying to be a junkyard", then we can enforce the housing standards. If he says, "I wanna, I am a junkyard", well, then he has to become a legally licensed junkyard, that's when his...
I'm not sure there's anything in housing standards for junkyards.
Well, not, not about junkyards.
I'm just talking about a guy with three or four, with junk, junk in his yard, junk in his yard, lack of a better term. I mean, that's not permitted either. Is it? Let's say you have a guy out there that has junk in his yard, cars, you know, parts.
Yeah, yeah.
And, but he's not trying to be a junkyard.
Then...
Well, we should be able to go out, I mean, there's, you can't just have three or four junk vehicles in your yard in Rollins Row.
Right.
And, I mean, although there are places that have seen them.
Well, we try to, yes, we try to act on it as we come across them, but it's just like the guy in Rollins Row, who's kind of cleaned up his act, for the most part. It's, it's, the way we pursued him, it's not in here, but we just said, it's a violation of his zoning order, and it's not an allowed use, it's not listed as an allowed use, so it's not permitted.
And, but then if he was to reply, "Well, I'm not trying to be a junkyard", I just have things in my yard.
He has to clean up his act then.
Show, but show me the, but his response may be, "Under what coordinates am I violating?"
We're saying by definition, it's a junkyard.
So that's why you want to have a definition here?
Oh, we have to have, yes, yes.
But does this tie too closely into it being an operating business, where it says bought, sold? What if I'm just keeping stuff in my yard?
Well, it says or, it says or.
So you beat that, how is that any one of those things?
Yeah, yeah.
If someone just wants to take their heels in and drag out the process, it'd be nice to have either you're a junk, if he says, "I'm not trying to be a junkyard, I just have junk in my yard",
Right.
then we have recourse to cease and desist.
Yeah, we have, I think we were stumbling a little, because we had, there's a provision in the zoning order, it doesn't exactly say junk, I mean, in table use rates, it doesn't exactly say junkyard. But it's what we used for the Rollins Row guy. And it just open lot, storage, or sale of junk or salvage materials.
So only lot storage, that covered, that, that's, that covered that.
So, we're essentially saying, we don't have a definition of it.
That's the thing, we have to go at someone who has the cars in the yard. Wouldn't it move us all at the point in time also to... I mean, if that's all you have, to go after someone, you know, and...
We would, we would, I think what we would do, I agree...
We're just thinking someone wants to take their heels in and, you know, really divide the words and nitpick and do interpretations of this and that, and/or...
That's certainly gonna hap-...
I would protect it that way.
That's certainly gonna happen, then we just have to get legal involved. Which we did.
At our cost.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
But if it gets to the point, you know, it goes to the judicial thing, then we can ask for, you know, attorney costs and all that other stuff. But the guy with Rollins Row, they just kept dragging it out, we kept sending them letters and all the rest of the stuff, and I'm sure it costs.
So I'm trying to learn from that. What about the next time?
Going with, with a gun, and, I mean, yeah.
What, what do you, what do you, what kind of better processor you're...
I, I don't know, I'm drawing on the table there. It just seems like, you know, the guy that just wants to store things outdoors habitually, he's not buying, selling, trading, it's just his stuff.
Well, we could point out that...
If you come that long into tooth, and as long as that one's drawn on, there's gonna be a way to better protect the situation from duplicating itself.
We could point out that the term junkyard does not include uses established entirely within enclosed buildings. So if the guy wants to build a garage and put stuff in it, right?
Well, that, yeah, it takes it out of the public nuisance, you know, the problems that the body areas in. But that's not the case with some people.
True, that is up to them to bring it into compliance. If we say it's a junkyard and they say it isn't, we say, until you go to a judge, we're right.
Okay.
It's up to the town to sue or something like that.
So we can defend that position of saying, "That's an illegal junkyard", and that's, that's why we're doing the cease and desist.
Yes.
Clean it up, you know, like terms, you know, a program of compliance.
But you don't think that reads, and I'm just on the question of that, that reads too much as this being a business versus the guy that's not a business, "I just have the things in my yard".
Oh, I don't think so. The word or, or is it? Is bought, sold, exchanged, stored, built, packed, assembled, or...
Bored, handled.
It's not just bought and sold.
It could just be stored and packed, or stored and disassembled, or stored and handled. Any one of those. So, it, it depends on the extent of which, the, the extent of which whatever it is is going on will determine whether or not it's egregious enough that the town would choose to take action over it.
And the other thing, we, I mean, what we could do, I'm just, if we don't include that new section and just include a new definition, and put the definition in place of the open lot storage, wouldn't the same thing? Because we do have the, the license required by the Select Board, so...
It's always better to have regulations than put in the license.
Okay.
Such was the advice from the Municipal Association.
Aha, okay, yeah.
So, so the minimum is, is the, that, we definitely need the definition, but I would err on the side of putting the whole thing in the regulation, because then it is not specific to one circumstance, but we're making a broad statement about how we feel about junkyards and how we want to regulate junkyards. So I think it's a good idea to have a whole provision in there, if not, it's on separate.
So do we want to get rid of B? Down the bottom, the first page. We would keep... I guess we, no, we would get...
We're not getting rid of the whole section, we're getting rid of the mission, the Conservation Mission?
Well, so if you remove it, then you're removing I underneath, or, or Roman 1, which the whole six-month...
Yeah, which is, but we want to keep the Roman 2, pursuant to, right?
Yes, I think.
So then, I think the easier thing is to leave the whole thing in there, and then to get, just to get rid of the Conservation Commission.
Could you, could you, could you word it so that the Select Board has the option to send you to the Conservation Commission? At their, if they think it's suitable? But not required, but at the, at the...
Well, yeah, well, the Planning Board could always say to the applicant, it needs review by, by the Conservation Commission. Because the thing is, Conservation Commission is just advisory. I mean, they're not regulated for like planning, et cetera. So if the Planning Board said, "We need some input from Conservation", it's certainly the option at any time.
But if, if you word it so that it could, the Select Board or the Planning Board has any, has the license to have the review of any other board they can fit?
I think, yeah, we could do whatever we want.
Is there a need to say it when the need, when the, when the ability is already there?
I don't think so, because if we just say...
It's already under the purview of, of either board, the Select or the Planning, at any time.
So if we just get, you know, receive a recommendation from the Planning Board, and provided they read all the, we just, yeah. Then the Planning Board can ask at whatever time they want.
And zone it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta add zoning in there before, first receive A, you have to add variance
Okay, you have to have an inclusive...
From ZVA. Then, recommendation from the Planning Board. Well, I, I wouldn't even say recommendation from the Planning Board, I would say site review.
Review, yeah. Yeah.
Where'd you get these from, Tom?
The airfield. The guy sent it to me, it was from the Municipal Association, and we asked for him, and this is what he sent. So that's all I used.
Okay, I was, I was just teasing.
So I got it back to the Conservation Commission, so might it be related to the fact that there can be runoff from, yeah? I mean, I'm just looking at Dover's Conservation and Commission, and it says, of course, it's developing, protecting, and promoting the natural resources, so and for blah blah blah, the watershed resources of the city, so I'm thinking whatever municipality came up with this, because I know that one of the issues with the, with the current one is the issues of the fluid, or whatever you want to call it, going into the Seven Falls River, so isn't that the basis for all the Conservation Commission? The other municipality probably put that in there?
I, I can only assume so, I mean, that's, that's their purview. Take those kind of recommendations and reviews, and it is just, I mean, it's just whatever they come up with, it would just be a recommendation.
But we're not giving up the right to have a review by, by, by the Select or the Planning Board. Anyone can suggest that, in the site review, I mean, all that's, once again.
Yeah.
Well, and so maybe if it didn't say recommendation from the Conservation Commission, I, I just, I can't imagine, that's a troubling word for me, because the, the Conservation Commission isn't gonna recommend that there ever be a junkyard, but at the same time, they can make recommendations in ways that you implement a junkyard to make it environmentally better.
So how about if the junkyard is not legally operating, maybe licensed by the Select Board, after first receive a variance from the zoning board, and...
Then site review.
Site review, yeah. From the Planning Board, which may include
Suggestion.
Review and comment by the Conservation Commission. So it's not a recommendation.
Yeah.
Because if they, if they come back and say, "We don't like it", it's still just advisory.
Well, and I think it's worth getting their, their opinion in writing.
Yeah.
So Tom, I looked at RSA 236, colon, 122, and the annual fee can be as high as 250. Why don't we check, pick 250 versus 250?
That was one of the things I was gonna suggest, is that we need to review that 50 bucks. I mean, right now it's only, isn't it 25 or something?
No, 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 no.
Is it 50?
I think it's 50 annually, it's, I think, 250 for new ones or something, but for annual renewals, it's much lower. But I was gonna suggest that we take that out of there, because this can only be revised at the annual meeting, and instead, put something in there that, you know, fee set per RSA, you know, by the Select Board, and just give them the discretion to set the fees.
To get the dollar amount off, good idea.
Okay, because the statute reads, the annual license fee is not more than 250 to be paid at the time the occupant was paid it annually thereafter, in the event of renewal.
It might even be 250 already, I haven't, I haven't...
Oh, I didn't.
It's bits.
I think it is 250, Caroline.
Say what?
I think 250 is for the junkyard.
It's, I think it's more.
Is, is it in the line anywhere?
It's not in regs, it's in their license.
This says, a license, you know, this is, this is a copy of...
Last year's?
Yeah. License for no fee of $50 per year shall be assessed by the town.
Okay, so then the new one, it was a...
Right, so we're not gonna allow new ones.
Well, right, but I think the new one is, is different, and maybe you got hit with it.
Oh, 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 okay, so you've already increased it, is what you're saying?
Um, I'm saying, I don't know, is what I'm saying. But at least you figured that, at least you got us closer to that, but I think if we just take the dollar amount out, then
Right, right, right.
at least we're not locked into that.
We're not, we wouldn't be locked into 250. You're saying take the dollar amount out.
So, we could put it in as 250, if we want it to be, be 250, I suppose we could max it out. I just thought that whatever you put in there, the law may change, but you're, you're tying the hands of the Select Board to set the fees. Which is fine, if you just want it to be 250, we can certainly do that.
We could say up to 250 in this, and then let the Select Board...
Well, then even if you say up to 250, if that RSA changes, or if it becomes pursuant to a, you know...
Yeah, I think, I, I think you're right about, if we get rid of the fee from a zoning ordinance, because, yeah, it'd be, like, we could have the fee in subdivision, site review regs, because that is entirely under the authority of the Planning Board to change, so, and it doesn't require going to town either.
Or you can give the Select Board the authority to set the fees.
Yeah.
Pursuant to RSA.
I think that's probably a good idea. Okay?
I'm thinking about the testing fees that is mentioned here. The Select Board is, it says, we've got the Select Board appropriate investigation of each likely connected prior. The fee, the testing fees that'll be incurred, if so decided, is that something that the applicant would be responsible for providing, or the town?
No, no, no. We're saying you have to do this, we need to see the results, and they have to pay for it.
Okay, and that's clearly understood.
Oh, yes.
If we, if we ask for them, they have to pay for it.
Yes.
Is it worth putting it in there, though, that, you know, at the applicant's expense, or at the...
Whatever it was, yeah, I mean, it's...
Why not, so we're at the end of toxic substances, comma, at the applicant's, at the sole expense of the applicant?
Sure.
We don't have to address things like non-permeable surfaces, because that's all site planned, right?
Right.
So do we need to make a motion to say that we want this to...
I think if we do a workshop.
You can do it by consensus, you can't really put it in a workshop.
Ah, that makes sense.
We get to be informal.
All right, so are we ready to move on?
I'll just redo, I mean, redo this, send it all again.
Yes, good, thank you.
So next is my thought, and I'm ready to have to be finger-sent debated on this, is my proposal for a new zoning district, Scenic Countryside.
Okay.
Scenic Countryside, so we would amend 3.1 to add Scenic Countryside. Purpose of Scenic Countryside in 3.2 would be ensure the integrity of natural open spaces and scenic view sheds for the betterment for the community. And under 3.3, Scenic Countryside, I describe the area that it would entail.
Is that Bear Road?
Is that?
Bear Road?
Yes, Bear Road.
Very descriptive.
Well, I, 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 it's probably overly wordy, but, you know,
No, no, no.
and I've looked at the way that the districts were described, and that's how I came up with it.
Yeah.
So, are cluster subdivisions allowed? Are cluster subdivisions allowed in the Scenic Countryside?
I don't know.
And if not, how do we remove that, I guess we would have to revise the subdivision. I don't know how they're tied.
Everything in zoning orders too, causes. And it's, you know, I think it just says in the... I thought it was just limited to the...
What page are you looking at, Tom?
Um, page 53 of the zoning orders, where 8.7 open spaces, clusters, subdivision. I thought it was just the CR.
So you know you have other rivers, well, so you're referencing, under your special exception, this 250-foot setback from Seven Falls River. There are other brooks and rivers... in town, and maybe they don't warrant 250 feet, but they flow into the San Falls, and so they may warrant some kind of significant setback if that's your intention.
All right, so you're sort of suggesting that I would need to add other smaller water bodies?
Well, like, so, you know, if you like that 250 feet from the San Falls, I would just add, you know, some other number of feet from other named rivers. I wouldn't name the rivers, but from other, you know, rivers that have names. Like, if they're, if they're big enough to have a name, that's a silly qualification, but, you know, find some other way to define other bodies that flow into or a watershed into the San Falls River. So I guess my point is that we are a, we're a stormwater community, and as for stormwater community, and all of our riverways are impaired, and they all ultimately flow into the San Falls River, and so while it is noble to want to protect that river, the protection, even if to a lesser extent than any other river, will also ultimately assist in the protection of San Falls River.
So setback from the San Falls River in any, in all waterways leading into the San Falls River?
Well, but at the same time, if you have such a huge setback from all rivers, you're going to have, like, you know, 0.3 acres in the middle of countryside for the residential that is developable because there are other waterways back in there. So, so I don't mean for it to be overly burdensome either because, you know, essentially, you're going to end up with, you know, not really allowing development at some extent if everything is, you know, set back. It's just something for consideration.
Okay, I'm happy for your thoughts.
And I did find in the table of use rate, permitted uses A14. Permitted uses residential open space area cluster development. So it's allowed in UR, SR1, SR2, and CR.
So it just won't be allowed in SC?
If we, right.
Okay. The other thing is, in your special exception thing here, you've got, it does allow for single-family homes, but the state law says that anywhere that you allow single-family homes, you have to allow accessory dwelling units.
Oh, accessory dwelling units?
Yes.
I have no problem with accessory dwelling units.
Okay.
Works for me.
Well, I mean, give me some feedback on this proposal. I mean, people say they hate it, they...
I like it.
You like it?
Yeah. Yeah, keep them the
Unibody.
Proposing to keep the Scenic Countryside.
Yeah. I think it's certainly a valuable asset. I mean, if we go down Bear Road or, my wife and I, we drive up, we look at this open land and think, "Where else is this?"
Exactly, exactly.
And it isn't. So I think it's I think it's a great asset.
Is that the same road where for sale signs have been put up?
Uh huh, I believe so.
Oh.
Yes, and I agree with the value of the open space, but, you know, I also I think a lot of, you know, landowners have their own property in these areas and, you know, leaving their rights to develop as they may see fit or but even that, even beyond that, sometimes land can be developed in ways that generate more taxation than other ways. And, you know, clearly, a big, a big thing in town is taxation. I mean, you know, we're supporting ourselves here and you know, I just, you know, we all love room four being, you know, a commercial or anything like that, but I mean, I just, I have to really weigh in the fact that, you know, change is inevitable and development is inevitable, development is inevitable. And I don't know what you want there. I don't know, I would have to give some thought if I was to say a yea or nay on my
Sure, go ahead.
You know, that's just where I'm coming from, too.
No, I, I hear. And actually, the idea behind this apart is to maintain value, that I think that, and it's not prohibiting development, because it'd have to be, meet certain criteria here and, you know, a you know, comparing my small raised ranch on Caris Drive produces a lot less taxation than a larger lot in the woodlands that's had, so. I don't want to say that. I'm happy to have it shot down or whatever.
I don't, I don't think it's about shooting it down. I think it's, it's about recognizing all the ways in which it's going to affect all the things that it's going to affect. It's, I think essentially that people who already live here would love it because it does protect the open space to some, to a greater degree than what we have. But it also promotes gentrification because people have to afford a five-acre lot instead of affording a 15,000-foot squ... Well, in this zone, it would have already been a two-acre lot, but, so, so you're, you're making, you know, there's kind of an expectation, I think, in the way that this is written, that the homes that would be developed out in that area should develop and one day happen would be bigger, grander properties. And you're still going to get a development, but you're just going to get a more spread-out development with a five-acre minimum and no cluster subdivision, and there's no need now to or no provision for the cluster subdivision, so there's no benefit, if you see the benefit of cluster subdivision, with that conservation land set aside. So it doesn't help with the regional housing crisis.
But who, but I, I anticipate this argument for me, but how many people have, look, let's look at Oldenburg Lane. What are the houses there starting at?
Oh, like 400, 450, something like that.
So who is coming to the town and saying, "We want to build houses for 150,000 dollars"?
Well, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. Well, nobody's doing that because, you know, it is the nature of development that people will always develop to the highest potential of the land and to the highest profit of the developer. I'm just putting it out there that there is a dark side.
And let's think about, like, workforce house, like, no one, let's say we, we create, I don't think you need a a zone for workforce house, but no one's going to build workforce housing in Rollinsford because there's no public transportation.
Well, and they're still not, even if there was, they're still not going to build workforce housing because it's not as profitable as what you have here. Or, or even like a cluster subdivision, you can sell more homes in a cluster subdivision than you could with this. So I'm not saying that, that you're absolutely right that already we're not the place for that necessarily, but I just wanted to point that out, that it's not the point of a cluster subdivision, whether you like it or not, and we have it in our regulations, is that it allows for a denser use of the land in order to allow open space, so that you have less sprawl. So I'm not saying that this is a good thing or a bad thing. I'm just sort of exploring all of the other perspectives about it. And so my only, you know, like I said, I think that most people who currently live in Rollinsford would favor this over what we already have, but it does disable some people's property rights to some degree because you are diminishing their development potential. So I think it's just worth having a, just dispersing the, we already disperse information as much as we can, and we'll have a public hearing anyway, but I think it just really requires as much public input as possible to be sure that aligns with public values because, you know, I would be hesitant to make a zoning change when our, when our master plan is so out of date anyway, except that I do think that you're right, that probably most people would want this and agree with this, and it does align with the old version of the master plan.
And how does the uploading of the master plan go coming?
It is miserable, I have to tell you.
Okay, so, I mean, and again, I'm not trying to be sarcastic, but
No, no, but, yes.
We can't stop doing things because we're waiting for this ma... And I'm not trying to put it on you or whatever, but it's, it's an obstacle that I don't see progress being made on, no offense, or I can't see putting off proactive thoughts because, because of that.
I agree. I just think we need to compensate for that with, you know, the loudest public hearing we can have is all.
And, you know, zoning ordinance is by, zoning by its very nature restricts property owners. I mean, that's, that's the basic, and this is something that comes from a public hearing, and it can be shot down, you know, it could be, it could be my, my little idea here could be shot down flames, and I'm not suggesting that I'm right on this, and I think, and I anticipated Kevin's comments and yours, and, but I'd like to throw it out there for the, I'd like to put it on for the public hearing, and, you know, maybe I'm going to be proven to be all wet behind the ears or wherever the expression goes.
I'm just curious, like, is the process to create a new zoning district as simple as proposing one and putting it down on paper?
Well, it has to go through, is it, it's a revision of the zoning ordinance.
Does that...
Yeah, if you want to add this.
So you have a public hearing and you vote on it?
So there's not, like, surveying that needs to happen or anything like that?
It goes along the hearing processes, but is not like what needs to happen?
Like, no surveil, you know, survey of the land or anything like that?
Not at all, not at all.
Now, I was actually surprised at how basic the, if you look at how the, the definitions, how basic they really are. This is your copy, by the way, Caroline, I borrowed it.
But, but like, the zoning map is so constructed, I mean, it just, it just seems, I mean, any of these... Do these, any of this proposed zone take away land from other existing zones? I mean, it does, doesn't it?
It would, yes.
So, I mean, you're like, it just seems crazy to me a little bit, it's like, so, like...
It's a little more complicated, you're right, then. I mean, we would say this, but the amendment in the ordinance would have to say, you know, "We're changing" anything in, whatever, the S1 to this, and, so, yeah, this is a little more, but you just have to identify it. I mean, that's something, it doesn't have to be surveyed. We just have to identify the new boundaries and the new zones.
And we would be creating new non-conformities, which is not necessarily, you know, a bad thing, but just to note that whatever pre-existing structures likely
Sure.
meet these new setbacks.
No, there'd be, there'd be a lot of non-conforming uses.
Yeah. That's bound to happen anytime.
Right.
Yeah.
So I would, I would like to see if you would, there's a zoning map in the back of that, and if you wouldn't mind hot, like, drawing what you think this represents?
And I actually tried to. I couldn't hop on the town internet. Sure, I mean, I, I would draw it on this, on your booklet, but
That's fine.
I mean, is the, that's awfully small anyway. It's kind of hard to...
Yeah.
Right, so, so yellow is the country residential, and I think it, it seems as though you would be, everything you're proposing is within what is currently the yellow country residential zone?
Yes, I think so. I think, I'm just trying to think. This is all
Also, if that's the case, I wonder if we just rename CR to
Well, that's true, too.
Well, no, because this goes well beyond. I mean, I'm carving out a smaller, a much smaller
Oh.
section within. I'm not taking this whole yellow and making it Scenic Countryside. I'm taking basically, I, I can't even quite tell on this, but where I'm doing this. I almost think that's a better thing to look at, even though it's over.
No, I, so much bigger one, Caroline, though.
I'm kidding with the wheels.
See, I don't know how to stick it up on a wall, but at least you can look at something bigger. You can see street names. So here's Bear Road.
Right.
And here's Roberts.
Mm-hmm.
And there's General Sullivan in Pinch Hill. Robert, uh, Room Four. So you mentioned this intersection here with Roberts Road and Room Four.
So I think we're talking, so...
Were you talking about, like, you know, this strip? But you had mentioned something also about Sligo, rather, about the river San Falls. So were you talking about, like, everything from Bear Road over, but...
Well, see, I sort of wanted to do something along, you know, the scenic, the view sheds there is what I want to protect.
Okay, so...
I mean, I think, I think I've got to describe my boundaries better.
Well, yes, but I think it would be really important to have some kind of visual representation for people so that they can see what's changing.
So when you were mentioning General Sullivan, you didn't, you weren't including it, right?
No, I just was trying to be an end form.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So you're not really taking anything out of any other zone other than the CR?
Right, that's correct.
Yeah. Wouldn't that be easy enough?
Well, so I guess I'm still trying to understand, are you just trying to take, like, this intersection and, and do something like, you know, some, some, you know, distance on either side? Because like you say, it's about the scenic-ness, but then you're totally breaking up that zone and leaving pockets of stuff that's not in that zone, but then you also mention the river, so I guess I'm still struggling to picture what's changing.
So I guess I had thought about, and again, I only worked on this kind of area this week tonight, is something like carving out areas that, almost like a cross, if you will, in the middle of the country residential.
Because the problem with that is that, you know, you need, you need road frontage to develop, and so you're taking all the road frontage, which means you're really, even though you're not directly impacting these areas that are not along the roadways, you're, you're indirectly very much affecting them because they don't have road frontage, although I guess you could still build a road into them if you were going to anyway.
How about if you, if we consider just doing CR to three acres? What's the difference? And...
I think it would be much simpler if you did something like divide this and take everything, like, over there.
Yeah.
Even though that doesn't protect, you know, an area that I would imagine you're trying to protect, but I think it simplifies the defining of it and the understanding. You know, if you do something like what you're suggesting, then every single person has to, like, figure out how, how far, you know, they have to, it, it sort of increases the burden in figuring out what their zone is. You're splitting lots more properties into multiple zones than if you divided by the streets.
I think we then get back to Sarah's concern, is that, like, you wouldn't want to run it through somebody's lot and have to be on the lot line.
Well, that's what I mean. That's why I'm thinking that if you, if you follow, like, streets and have streets be boundaries, then you're not so much breaking up lots, but you're taking entire lots. But then you're restricting your intent, you know.
I mean, I don't, I could, I could live with a smaller, I, again, this is just an idea that I've
Yeah, yeah.
I've never...
The other thing is, even if you minimized it somewhat, like, if you took everything from these streets over plus, you know, 400 feet or something, if, you know, whatever you could do to minimize the, the cutting through lots with a 100-foot zone.
So, so we, Old Mill Lane to let's say we did that. We decided to do, well, I want to go down here, though.
Well, then, okay, so, so what if you took what if you took Old Mill Lane and went entirely went entirely that way?
So Old Mill Lane entirely this way?
Yeah, and it would include that too, but...
Sure, and then, but you're saying leave the north side of Portland Avenue alone?
Well, that's the compromise, is that, is that you lose like...
Well, sure, I mean, and I, I would be willing to do, consider a smaller change than that.
I guess...
Although that's one of the more important...
Well, I, I guess that's my concern, is that whatever you're doing, you're, you're trying to protect something and people, you know, I think there needs to be public input on what are we trying to protect?
Mm-hmm, well, sure, that's why we have the public hearing meeting.
Well, right, so, I, I think it's just, I just think it requires an extensive public engagement, not even just public hearing, but a public engagement kind of process over something that's so significant.
I think it's, be pretty clear that this wouldn't be a, you know, a one and done thing. I mean, you bring it up and then it's a public hearing, it's gonna, I'm sure a lot of people are gonna trash it, it has to be revised. I mean, I don't think it's just gonna happen, especially now, between now and, was it January? Is it, it'd be?
We have to, our, our meeting on the ninth is the public hearing, and we have to have the warrant finalized very soon after that, so there's not a big window for discussion and revision.
We have one either the thirteenth, don't we?
So, so we have Thursday the ninth, Thursday the ninth is the next planning board? We moved it to Thursday?
Yeah, but wasn't there, what's, when's the public meeting?
Well, that, so that is the public, so it's the, a public hearing followed by the planning board meeting, where we do have some cases on the agenda, so we're just starting with the public hearing.
On the ninth?
On the ninth.
And then the thirteenth?
I don't know anything about the thirteenth. Now I'm confused.
I just have, I just have it in my notes for the thirteenth, maybe it's a school board or I don't remember.
It might be a school board, but typically there are not town meetings on Monday nights other than select board because the select board typically meets on Monday nights.
Yeah, I don't, what they're, what they're saying is they want, they want, as I understand, they want roads as the boundaries, is what they're saying, right?
They're making it a lot easier.
It's making it a lot easier.
You know, we don't have enough time. If it's between now and then, you know, when the warrant article, I mean, this, this is something I think they would take review and...
I think whatever you do, you're gonna have public input that, you know, that it's a great idea, but it should be somewhere else, or that, you know, there are those in town who, who would rather have lots of houses, you know, believe it or not. I, you know, I just think it warrants a lot of discussion about what area is it really? Because all of that is worth protecting for different reasons. Some of it is, is less visible than other parts of it, and so, yes, there, you know, with the scenic part, the scenic countryside, you know, there is something to be said for how that would inform where one would put it, but... I think it's complicated.
It's not a this year thing.
Well, I don't think, it's not that it can't, you know, I would say it probably wouldn't get well-defined for, in time for this March. That doesn't mean necessarily that we couldn't try, if you wanted to try, but I think, I, I would just not, I would just caution your expectations and understand that it's probably gonna be a longer drawn-out process that might inform the following March.
So what would be the harm? And let's think, what would be the harm of starting, so we gotta start a process, it's a long process. So let's say we put something on for the public hearing, and if nothing else, doesn't that move it along, even if it doesn't?
Well, right, it starts the conversation, and that's where it starts, is a conversation. So there's nothing wrong with that.
The other thing is, you know, I think about, isn't it the state law that if you post a change, then people can't come in, even though it's just posted and not enacted, developers can't come in and say, yeah, but I still wanna do what's allowed by the CR zone, you know what I'm saying? Like, we would post, this area is gonna be scenic countryside.
So it freezes?
Yes, that's exactly, yes, yes, I think so.
That's dangerous. That's kind of dangerous.
Yeah, but I'm pretty sure...
Well, so we have to be, well, okay, so, while that's interesting and compelling, and some people would really love to hear that, I, I also, you know, caution us to be obstructionist.
Pick a sound.
I think it's worth conversation, and I, I would propose bringing it forward to just see how people feel about it.
Yeah.
But I would encourage you to identify what area.
So why can't we, so, so Tom is going to refine the language for the junk dirt fee now and the public hearing, why can't I, we put it on for the public hearing, and I refine the language?
I think that's great.
In description between, do I, do I have to have, do I have to say today what the exact boundaries of scenic countryside would be?
No, I would say, but just be ready to define it and to defend your definition, but also to be able to, you know, put a colored piece of paper right over the spot that you're designating so that people can visually understand.
All right, so I would like to do that. I wanna start the process, even if it doesn't succeed, I wanna start the process.
Couldn't you pick an area and then in the future expand that if you needed to?
Sure, I mean, the, the, everything can always be amended.
Yeah, but I think it'd be easier to go the other way.
Yeah, that's true too.
Ask for too much and then say, okay, I'll narrow it down to...
Professional negotiator, I am.
I was president of my union for over fourteen years.
I guess you were.
Pick this whole area and then scale it back.
Well, I'd have to come up with some, I'd have to come up with a better description, so, all right. So do we need to say, do we need to...
I think that, I think the consensus of the, of the group, do I, you know, I think the consensus of the group is have at it and we'll see what you come up with for the next.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Yes, exactly.
All right. Do we have any other proposals?
I think you're taking the time to be thoughtful and to write that up, and I appreciate your thoughtfulness in...
Well, I just wish, I, I feel, I mean, I wish I had something on impact fees also, but I have just been out straight and it's, it's a horrific, I don't like to make excuses for what it is.
It's, it is, that's...
So let me ask you this, so do I have to actually have impact fees? Have I had to put anything up, bring it up? Can I still put out for public hearing, come up with some language between now and then?
I don't think you really have to worry about the impact fees, they're already in the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
It's the amounts and, and figuring all that stuff out.
So that's, that's more just procedural, that doesn't have to do with revising the...
We don't need to do a warrant, that'd be the warrant, that's just part of our, okay.
So in other words, I think we can implement that at any time.
Okay, yeah.
Once we have good forms and process.
Okay.
And administrative staff.
Well, they're, yeah.
What'd you say?
Administrative staff.
Yes, yeah, okay.
Finance department, staff was a whole...
Sure, do you live in town?
We already have, we just have to manage it.
And know how to manage it and...
Establish it.
Yeah, have a process, have, you know, some policies that help us understand how to do it.
Okay.
But that, that's not reinventing the wheel, lots of other communities do that, so it shouldn't be...
No, no, I, I agree, I agree, and...
Well, it is certainly a lift to figure out the paperwork, to figure out how to administer it, and I, I think that still the bigger hurdle is the actual administration of it. But that's not to say it's not worthwhile, so I was...
But you see, if we, if we increase the junk dirt fee from fifty to two fifty, those little things, we increase the operating budget we have, and increasing the annual fee for using the transfer station.
Well, that's a, transfer station is, is, that's a whole other thing to work.
I'm just trying to be forward.
There's a huge benefit to having impact fees, I mean, it certainly helps with, you know, growing your infrastructure, absolutely. I mean, it'd be great to have them, they just obligated to handle the problem.
So what is the next step for me bringing that forward? I, I, I go out and, let's say, hire it from another town and, and just sort of take it and cut and paste it? Not, not literally cut and paste, but take their format and then bring it in here and change amounts and...
Well, right, so I guess, I guess what I would wanna know, or, when Dover says that the fire impact fee is two thousand dollars, for example, how do they come up with that number? It has to be based on something, so we're gonna have to do the same...
I think it's, it's spelled out how...
Is it, is it down to that? You know, you, you have to prove it.
Sure, no, I'm not trying to be arbitrary, I...
Well, no, 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 I understand, I just, you know, if, if we are gonna carry that out, then we in the office need to know how to figure that out, so, so do you take, you know, you're gonna need, you know, sixty percent of another fire truck, and so you take the cost of that piece of equipment and then you divide it by, you know, I'm, I'm not really sure, you know what I'm saying? So, so, so we need to know how we come up with numbers, how we do the math to figure out what exactly is the impact, and then once you know what the impact is, how do you divide it upon, how do you make a fee out of that? Because, you know, you don't know if you're gonna get two hundred houses out of that subdivision or fifty or twelve, because every developer will have a different idea of how to approach that, so, so what do you, you know, and so every, it's not even a big development because the impact fees, but it's any, any, any building permit for new construction, so, so it has to fit with whatever might come in for new construction. So, and so how do we wrap our heads around what are we charging that we can do across the board?
Yeah, the planning board has to adopt such studies or methodologies, and related fee schedules that provide for a process or method of calculating proportionate share, it's, I mean, it's how, it doesn't say specifically, you know...
Right, we gotta do it, is all.
And what section is that, Tom?
It's section thirteen point two in the zoning ordinance, starts on page eighty-six.
Okay, all right. Well, you've been very patient, and I appreciate that. Am I allowed to correspond with Tom and to, if I come up with some language and say, am I allowed to do that?
Absolutely, yeah. Absolutely, and thank you, because it, I, I agree that it's worthy of discussion and investigation, and we, we don't really know how heavy the lift is until we start moving in the direction we go, so...
Well, I'd rather be on the side of trying to anticipate change than risk it being...
Yeah.
Change happen, and change is gonna happen, I do recognize it.
That's good, thank you.
All right, thank you guys for your patience, keeping out of your evenings, away from your family.
I have a question.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
No, it's a whole different question though, about some of the cases earlier this year that there have not been a history of, I was thinking of Dr. Bennett's property, where there was a, there's a large building, and I guess it looks like a barn, but so far as the history of it, the permits or what was going on there, it doesn't exist, or, you know, it's just very old. And I was, wanted to suggest that there could be like a cutoff time of, of looking for older, older information, because it just seemed as though some of the progress, well, just using that for example, I mean, there was others that maybe the applicant wanted to move ahead, but they had to, you know, find out about the permits of that large building, and it's really, I think the person went ahead and built what he wanted to build, yeah, so...
I know, that's exactly what happened.
And, yeah, so to have like a uniformity of, I'd say, well, the number of years have gone by that, I hate to say, but we have to move on and with that, that's information.
So what are you, are you suggesting that something didn't go the way it could've gone because, you know, that you have a new owner of a property where something didn't happen the way it should've, and so that there were implications for the new property owner that perhaps shouldn't have been, is that what you're suggesting?
Oh, that with the new property owner, I'm just, it did happen that it was a little delayed, but it was like not necessarily delayed, just seemed as though, just as few examples of, the records are so old or did not exist, and I was just hoping that we could just have, say, a cutoff of time of, well, we didn't know what happened from then on and then move on, hope I'm making a bit of sense.
I, I think, you know, one other thing, though, on the, on the barn, for instance, in this whole process, that barn's from the town.
Yeah, okay.
So, isn't it...
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of your point then, in that case, yeah.
But I, I'm assuming you're saying if, I'm trying to think of a example here. Nothing's popping.
Most of the reason that that barn came up in discussion through that subdivision proposal is because the applicant wanted to, at first, infringe upon the river setback as much as that building already did, but in a different way.
The river, I realize, to do with the river.
Right, and so the problem with that argument is that it was never allowed to happen in the first place. So we do keep building permits.
Okay.
When people file building permits.
Okay.
But in a sense, the, the sins of the seller are not the problems of the buyer, though.
But they are not the enablement either.
Oh, 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 right.
They're not remission, right, they're not remission to the new.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think the sins of the seller, I mean, if the buyer inherits that and we say, this happened, for instance, this happens all the time, people finish their basements, then they sell a house, then the new guy wants to sell his house, and at this particular time, the bank comes in with an appraiser and they said, there's no permit for finishing the basement, it's that owner's responsibility, it's not the guy that did it. So you do, you know, if you assume ownership...
Yes, if they, that's establishing the value of the collateral to the, to the money that's not short.
Yeah, if you assume ownership, you assume responsibility.
Well, the, the buyer would have to bring into compliance any errors of the, of the property at, at the time of the sale.
Or the seller would, so you say, I, I finished my basement twenty years ago and just did it, and then ten years ago I sold it to you. Now, the banks are much more focused on this kind of stuff, so you wanna sell it, and the appraiser says, yeah, but it has a finished basement and there's no record in the town, so you, the owner, the current owner, have to rectify it.
That's what I mean, by correcting, correcting the deficiency, sure.
It would be whoever owns it at the time it is discovered.
Right, but chances are that would come up at time of the sale transaction.
Lately, yes, I mean, that's how years ago.
Because of the gross living area, there'd be a discrepancy there.
Yes, 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 yes.
I'm just thinking like what you're saying, if, if, if whatever the situation is with a property, whether it's, I guess you could, well, I'm just trying to think of...
Yeah, I can't think of it.
You know, improvements on, on setbacks or things like that, if, if the buyers, I would think at the sale transaction, that's gonna come to light, if, if, you know, once a survey is done or...
Exactly, yeah, we, there were circumstances, I mean, way back, where people would build too close to a lot line, because we never require certified plot plans after construction, so it would come to light at the sale, and then we say, oh, you have to go to the zoning board for variance for that setback, and the zoning board's not gonna say no and you have to pay on your house.
Right, yeah.
So, there've been, we, you know, we use certified plot plans and the zoning ordinance, I'm sorry, the zoning regs have been changed so that there's now a provision called equitable waivers, so that if we find this circumstance where the house is too close, it's not a variance, you can go for an extra waiver saying that this happened however long ago, and you have to make sure that it's, you know, it wasn't done on purpose and...
Right, normality, yeah, I see that. So I think that we've got situations like what you're concerned, this is covered, because in most cases it would be divulged at time of the transaction, in the long case, whether it's a vaccine value.
Sexy mom hysteria.
Or, or, it's an appraiser's...
Hey, yeah, hurry back, I'm still in the meeting.
Thank God we got that on tape.
My wife, her ID on my phone is sexy mom hysteria, I'm sorry, it's terrible, sorry.
Cool, you're getting the light flashing at the same time?
Well, you know why I did that, it's because, you can set it away, because occasionally I put in very long nights, where I only get like three hours sleep, and the flashing, sometimes I have to work the next day and I'm worried about oversleeping, and I've never overslept for a court hearing, but the... Now, I've never almost slept for a quarter year, but the flashing light is an extra, gives me a sense of comfort at night.
Comfort, I wouldn't even be alive.
Yeah, she said, we're sexy mama in the mornings, we're setting it up.
Well, hopefully, on the average, we're a worker more than I do. I guess I have to change that at some point, but I've, it's been her ID on my phone for so long.
I just have a couple of things, alright. And the zoning ordinance, we talked about, about little changes and Caroline mentioned the painting thing.
Yes.
So, that does say, um, it kind of excludes painting, you know what I mean?
Would you mind reading the paragraph?
Yeah.
For everybody?
It's under enforcement. Yes, page eighty-four, no person, uh, about the permits. No man may change to approved or unapproved real estate, including but not limited to buildings or other structures, mining, dredging, filling, grading, paving, excavation, drilling operations shall be commenced until a separate permit has been obtained. This is Board of Slickman.
Or a design name?
No, I, I have an old one, I guess.
Oh, yes, you do, okay.
So anyway, except that maintenance, painting and repairs to existing structures that merely replace existing structural materials shall not require a building permit. So it doesn't really say, if you paint, it does require a permit. It says...
It, it, yes, exactly.
If we just delete that one word, I think that...
Can you, can you say again about section and all of that?
Oh, sure, sure. Section thirteen dot one. And it's the, the first paragraph. So if we just delete, except that maintenance and repairs to existing structures, painting, we just delete painting. Right?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I think that covers it. I think that covers it. Um, I just want to, I, I guess I just wanna, I, I think it's worth talking about existing structures. You know, replacing windows, um, replacing things that are already there. You replace your deck boards. If it's still more than fifteen hundred dollars, you need a building permit?
Well, that was something I was gonna, is that, is you want to increase that? That dollar amount is pretty low.
Well, well, that's not even the point and we can discuss that, that's worth discussing too, but I'm, I'm, it's more about, do you really need a building permit for something that's already there?
No, except if it's a structural change.
Structural changes, yes. I just mean, you know, it seems as though the way it's already written, if you replace your windows, if you replace your roof, you know, th- those don't really have value as far as assessing is concerned, it's just fees, so...
There are, most, as far as I know, most communities don't require permits or re-roofing.
Right, I, I guess I just would like to see us align more with what's reasonable according to what other communities require. And other communities seem to not require replacement of existing things.
Since some...
Some certainly do, you know, but we seem to be more restrictive.
Yeah, like windows, for instance. You could do a one-for-one swap, you know, with the size of a window. But the energy code requires now, you know, double pane glass, et cetera. So if you take out an old window and even though the value of that one window might be less than the fifteen hundred, a permit still is necessary because it impacts something in the building code. Same thing with structural. I mean, if you have joists that don't support the required live load and you want to replace them, the new ones have to. So if you're gonna replace a window that's ancient, the new window has to meet the current regs.
Can you see how a window would get replaced and not meet current regs? I mean, I suppose it's possible that you like go find a, you know, a pretty used one from the restor or something, but you know...
Yes, and you're right, it happens all the time and nobody gets them and...
Well, it's not even that nobody gets them. I don't want to condone bad behavior. I think it's just more about, you know, if, if we need it because we need to verify code, you know, that's worthwhile. If, you know, for, for any reason that we need to verify code, that's worth getting a building permit. But otherwise, if it's not structural or otherwise, you know, relative to code, it just seems to be about fees and its burdensome.
Then, yes, I agree with you. If this doesn't relate to code, then yes.
So how can we revise the language so as to...
I think we increase the dollar amount, because if you're gonna, say, take up your deck boards and replace them, that's not really structural, it's just maintenance, you know, they're old, they're split. You want to put, you know, take a regular lumber and put down pressure treated. It would be difficult to do that, depending on the size of the deck, of course, for fifteen hundred bucks. So I think if you increase this dollar amount...
Well, should we, but I guess my point is more, shouldn't we just allow people to replace their deck boards? And they might have a really big deck or a small deck, but they're replacing something that already exists that's not structural.
Well, we don't want to, I think, get into that kind of description. We get...
The language to...
Too, yeah, too, too, you can do this, you can't do that, you can... See, that's why the dollar amount kind of cuts across the whole thing.
The dollar amount is a better way to do it because it's a, it's a finite number. It doesn't apply, I mean, it doesn't matter how big your deck is or what quality material you're using.
Yeah.
It's just a dollar amount. It's unbiased.
So what would the dollar amount, what do you suggest the dollar amount be? Twenty-five hundred?
I can see that.
Okay.
So we give it a painting and we increase the cost to twenty-five.
Was that in the same section?
Yes.
Okay, same paragraph?
Yes.
Um, we haven't really been talking about this, but we don't seem to have a definition of a butter and, um...
Right, I, I agree with what Sarah wrote in that, in that email. We just modify him to go with the state.
Did everybody get that?
I didn't, yeah.
Do you have a definition for an butter?
Not in zoning. We do in site and subdivision regulations, but there's some discrepancies on the applications that I think could be easily clarified if we just include the butter.
Right, it has an industry standard description?
There's a state.
State regulations, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we should definitely be, be doing that. Although, you can. I'm, I'm pretty sure Dover has a wider area when it comes to site review. You know, they figure, or subdivisions, they figure more people will be impacted than direct abutters. So they do have a radius of two or three hundred feet. So I mean, it's not, it's not illegal to have it, but if, we should be consistent. We have it in one, but...
Well, you just said not to be consistent.
What?
So, so you just made an argument for having a bigger radius for subdivisions because they have a bigger impact?
Oh, I meant, yeah, consistent from the ordinance to the application.
Well, okay, except that, to what application though? Because subdivisions, you know, more, more abutters than, than...
I'm just saying that whatever it says in the subdivision regs should be on the subdivision application.
But, but what about site plan, though, I guess?
Whatever says in the site regs should be on the site review application.
It says, I reviewed both of them today and they both go with the state definition of a butter within the, within the regulations.
Oh, so we should add that to zoning and then it's consistent, right?
Yeah.
And then change the application to meet that same, yeah. But the application, I mean, that should just be administrative thing, right, you know?
Well, I, I approached Charlie about changing the zoning application. He was not comfortable with doing it without like a public hearing. Like, he wasn't sure what the process necessarily is.
But if you changed it in the zoning ordinance, then I think you could change the application because it relates exactly to that.
Yep, yep.
I looked up a butter this afternoon from New Hampshire.
Yeah, I mean, I have the RSA right here.
Yeah.
The actual RSA. And I'll send everybody the email. We, we just discussed at the last meeting, the three of us having a, a think about it. But yeah, there is like, um, RSA six, seven, two, three is, is the definition of a butter. It's very clearly pointed out. So...
May I see that?
Absolutely. And that language is used in the site and subdivision regulations.
But it doesn't give a distance?
No, it does not. At one point, it did, but when it was last amended, it, it went to the current definition. Because I did a little research on the history of it, why our applications might have those distances. And past versions of that definition from the state were inclusive of the footage difference.
So we just have to kept up with it?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So can we include a distance and still be...
That, that I don't know. I don't know if we would be...
I, I think, I mean, I think we can.
It, it is keeping consistent, though.
Yes.
Okay, so is that two hundred feet?
If you want it to be.
Well, if, if, I mean, isn't that what subdivision and site plans say? It's two hundred feet?
So site plans is three hundred. Uh, subdivision goes with the current definition. Conditional use is three hundred, the...
So why does it go to the more consistent?
Special exception uses the, the current New Hampshire state definition and then variance uses two hundred feet. So it's like not consistent anywhere.
Just not ready.
But if we do add a number, then, then it has to be included in zoning ordinance and then we have to amend site review and subdivision regs.
So what if we said three hundred feet or, you know, I guess you never have to say that because the, the state law will always supersede. Um, I'm just concerned about putting in a number and then the law changes again and then we're not... There's something to be said about saying whatever, whatever the state law is, because then as it changes...
There's a lot to be said for that, I think.
And that, and of itself is, you know, consistent, except that it doesn't give a distance. It's just the definition, which means you've got to actually be thoughtful, not just draw a radius, right?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, whatever number we came up with.
Well, that's the other thing, is a number is inherently arbitrary. So, so how do you figure that out? Like that, you're looking at a map and you have to figure, you know, you have to like visually look. You can't just throw out a radius in a computer program and collect the data with the state definition.
Well, it's basically your property, anything that touches your property or anything that's like, versus a street or a stream. It's not, it's not actually that complicated.
Right. So then what if we changed everything to be that? Although, is that, is that, is that broad enough for something that could be as impactful as a subdivision? I suppose if it's a big enough property, then it just means...
You have more abutters.
More abutters. Do other people have thoughts?
I mean, I would think like in towns like Dover where there's more of an urban compact, that the distance thing would make more sense. In, in Rollford, where it's more rural, you're likely to hit all of the, the people who are most affected by you by hitting your abutters.
And probably two hundred feet is, in most cases, exactly that anyway.
Yeah, I mean, the properties here are a lot bigger, so...
So what if we changed it to read the state definition?
I think it's the safest way to cover it.
Sure, yeah.
It always will be.
Yeah. I have one last little thing.
Pretty close.
We identified under special exception appeals on the Oak Street property and...
Not smart, John, how rude.
Yes, where a special exception is provided in this ordinance may be permitted only if the Board of Justice takes the following findings as fact. And number one is the proposed site is found to be an appropriate location for such a use by the planning board. So those people had to file the application with the planning board and you guys had to say, yes, it's an appropriate location. You know, residential zone is appropriate to have a residential... What does that really accomplish?
Right, so I agree. So you, you remember this, Kevin, right?
I do remember that.
It was the, right, so I, I have no problem with the idea of, so for the newer members of the board, this, what this reporter Tom is talking about is if you want to come in and just get this almost meaningless approval from us and then go in front of the ZBA where the real action was.
Right.
And I have no problem getting rid of that.
Well, not only that, but I think worse, it's sort of artificially, well, in one of those cases, you know, the attorney on behalf of the applicant sort of...
Argued the, the approval as, as saying, hey, well, we went to the planning board. Right, I agree.
It really kind of set the property on route for a huge disappointment. I think it leaves some false hope.
Yep.
And it was, it was kind of a waste of time.
Kind of an implied consent thing.
Yes, the implied consent.
We just get rid of...
So what, what section is it?
Okay, that's section eleven point three, point two, point one. And we just want to delete by the planning board, because it still has to be found to be an appropriate location.
Are you gonna strike that? You're gonna write that up?
Isn't that what Sarah's doing?
I am, I just wrote the same thing.
Alright, if you could just send me your notes, if you would. I, I'm gonna put all this in.
Yes, I'll, 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 just let me, more eyes or...
Yes, I just want to make sure that we're watching the work.
Yeah, I, I'm the doctor.
Got it.
I know, it's good to talk to you.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Alright, well, thank you all for coming in during the busy holiday season. I thank you all very much.